This meeting of the Board of Supervisors for reorganization will now come to order Monday, January the 6th, 2014, 7:00 PM. Being called to order, we will stand for a pledge of allegiance at a moment of silence.
Aye. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great justice of God, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, we have called to order, pledge of allegiance. I'd like to make an announcement that there has been no executive sessions of any kind since our last meeting. This time, we come to the course of reorganization, and we need an appointment of a temporary chairman. I make a motion that we appoint Helen Klein-Peter as the temporary chairman.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. At this point, we have a temporary chairman. Helen?
We need to appoint a temporary secretary. Do I have any motions?
Make a motion, we have temporary secretary, Olivia.
I second it.
Go ahead, excuse me. You're the chair.
Motion is made. Is there any discussion? If not, all your motion, vote on the motion, please.
Aye.
There's one.
Okay.
All in favor?
Yeah, aye.
Sorry.
Can you oppose?
No, you all said aye. I need an appointment for the chairman of the board.
I nominate Henry Holman, Jr.
He's second?
I second the motion.
Any questions on the motion? If not, all in favor, please vote.
Aye.
I'll turn the meeting back over to Mr. Holman.
Okay, I have, thank you for appointing me to another year of many things to come out. It's one of those jobs that has to be done, that I can tell you. I do the best out of I can, folks, so I thank you for the opportunity to serve as chairman for another year, both of my supervisors on that vote. With that being said, we need a vice chairman. At this time, I'll make a motion that we entertain vice chairman as Brian McGuire.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it. Aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. You have before you roadmaster for the ensuing year?
I nominate Henry Holman, Jr.
Okay, nominated Henry Holman, Jr. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, Helen, so ordered. Secretary for the ensuing year? Do I hear a motion for secretary?
I move that we appoint Helen Klein-Peter as secretary.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered. Appointment for treasurer? Okay, do I hear a motion for treasurer?
Chance to run now.
I move we appoint Elizabeth Goodhart.
Okay, motion made, calling for a second.
Second.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. You have the appointment for your police chief for the year. Do I hear a motion for police chief for the year? Do I hear a nomination for appointment for the police chief for the year?
I move we appoint Richard Teckles, police chief.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered.
Thank you.
Appointment continued. Township solicitor?
You have in your packet that Wagner and Spria will still be at $150 per hour, that is the same as last year.
Okay.
Remember, you're appointing the firm, not the person.
Okay.
I move we appoint Wagner and Spria as solicitor for this year.
Calling for a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Township engineer?
You have before you, there are twos, fees of $115, that's the same as last year.
Do I hear a motion to retain Ratu as our township engineer for the ensuing year?
I make that motion.
Motion has been made, calling for a second.
Second.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Township vacancy board chairman? It is at the present time Donald Carpenter. What is the wish of the board to retain the Donald Carpenter? Do I hear a motion?
I move we retain Donald Carpenter as township vacancy board chairman.
Okay, calling for a second?
I second.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered. Township street enforcement officer, SEO, and the alternate before you is John Madden. Madden Engineering Services at the present time has both of those.
And the fees have not changed.
Okay.
I move we appoint Madden Engineering Services Incorporated as street enforcement officer and alternate street enforcement officer.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered. Township zoning officer and alternate is also with Madden Engineering and Services. What is the wish of the board to retain them for the ensuing year?
The fees are also the same.
Yep.
I move retain Madden Engineering Services Incorporated as township zoning officer and alternate.
I second.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. You have township uniform construction code agency, present time is Panoni?
Yes.
We just recently put them on board?
Yeah, and they're not changing their.
And they have not changed any of their fees. Okay, what is the wish of the board to retain Panoni for our township uniform construction code agency? Do I hear a motion to adopt?
I move we retain Panoni Incorporated as township uniform construction code inspection agency.
Okay, regularly moved, do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Penn Township Municipal Authority?
Mr. Holman III is up for reappointment, and that is who the authority recommended for another five-year term.
You've heard the recommendation of the Penn Township Planning Commission. What is the municipal authority? Excuse me, what is the wish of the board on the appointment for another five years to Henry Holman, Jr.?
Third.
Third, excuse me.
I move we appoint Henry Holman III for another five-year term on the Penn Township Municipal Authority.
Okay, motion been made, do I hear a second? Okay, do I hear a second? Hearing none, I'll make the second. Okay, for those interested, I, the appointment of that, I talked to Solicitor Wagner in regard to this. If there's any controversy about me making the second in regards to that, it is a non-paying job, he's a volunteer, he derives no money from the township, and has no special interest in it, he's not a paid employee, so therefore I can second that motion. May, maybe, a lot of people may not understand that, so I offer that explanation to them in regards to that. Okay, motion been made with a second. Second, open it for discussion. Okay, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered. Penn Township Planning Commission? You have one recommendation there for Art Paul Piazza?
Yes, for another, for a five-year term.
Yep, a five-year term. What is the wish of the board on reappointing Art to the planning commission? Do I hear a motion?
I move we appoint Art to the Piazza for another term on the Penn Township Planning Commission.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered. Penn Township Park and Recreation Board? We have one recommendation for a five-year term, and they have recommended that we extend that currency to Jim Renner, who's done so much for the planning commission.
Park and Rec Board.
Park and Rec, yes, excuse me, Park and Rec Board. What is the wish of the board? Do I hear a motion?
I move we appoint Jim Renner for another five-year term on the Penn Township Park and Recreation Board, Park and Recreation.
I second.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Penn Township zoning hearing board?
Joanne Glossner has been recommended for reappointment for another three-year term.
I make a motion to reappoint Joanne Glossner?
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered. Right to know officer?
Last year, it was me.
Ten? Do I hear a motion?
I move we reappoint Helen Klein-Peter as the right to know officer for Penn Township.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Selective officers?
Auditors.
Auditors. You have one auditor that was, comes in board by election, and two of them that are willing to fill in and do the job by appointment. And that's Bob and Brad DiPolo. So you have before you, asking for the appointment for Bob Schaefer, Brad DiPolo, to fill out our township auditors. What is the wish of the board?
I make the motion to reappoint Brad DiPolo and Bob Schaefer Sr. to auditors.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Cumberland Perry County Task Force?
Last year, Brian was the delegate, and I was the alternate.
Okay, what is the wish of the board for representative and alternate on Cumberland County, Perry County Task Force?
I make the motion to retain Brian McGuire and Helen as an alternate.
Okay, motion been made, I'll second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Capital tax collection bureau, representative and alternate?
Yes, I was the representative last year, and Susan Long was the alternate.
Okay, what is the wish of the board to retain Helen and Susan Long as representative and the alternate to the capital tax collection bureau? Do I hear a motion?
I move we retain Helen Klein-Peter and Susan Long as representative and alternate. The Perry County Tax Collection Committee.
Motion been made, do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it. Perry County Tax Collection Committee, representative and alternate?
Yeah, last year, I was the representative, CC was, and you, Henry, were the alternates.
Okay, I'd be glad to get off that alternate if I possibly can, so I ask not to be submitted or to fill in as an alternate. So, do I hear a motion for the representative and alternate?
May I ask a question?
Pardon?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Is CC going to, does she wish to remain or not?
Not that I know of.
Not that I know of.
This is the one that the countywide for the capital tax collection, they meet, truthfully, once a year, but you're more than welcome to go anytime, you know, to that meeting or to the cap tax meeting.
Do we have to have two alternates, or can you have one, or does it have to be filled?
No, the alternate, no, it does not have to be filled. They do want us to fill the primary.
If I ask of the board, I would like to offer myself in place of CC on that alternate.
Okay.
I move we appoint Helen Klein-Peter and Supervisor Peters as representative and alternate to the Perry County Tax Collection Committee.
Okay, motion been made, I'll second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Depositories, Helen?
Right now, we have Pliggett, excuse me, and Norstown Bank for checking, different institutions for CDs, whoever gets the best rate.
Okay, what is the wish of the board to retain our present depositories?
I move we retain our present depositories.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Okay, wages, salaries, and herring, no herring that I know of at the present time on there. We have wages and salaries here looking at, at the force to be taken for the township employees and et cetera. Okay, I would like to change the matter of what you have here in your 2004 wage proposal. Helen, I'd like to offer something for information, so that everybody knows exactly what the story is, because some of them go by percentages, and this time, we're taking a look at, since we have the contract with Duncan down here, and the, to keep the contract value the same as what we had last year with no increase, and to provide the services we did, those numbers have stayed the same. In order to do that, the police chief and Carlson have requested no increase in their wages. No, no increase for those, for those individuals there. They did, however, to meet within the guidelines of the budget, in the budget meetings that we had, asked for a 50 cent increase for the part-time police officers. So I'd like to deal with that, those items at the present time first. So, I would put before you, that is the same, same number, and our contract value is what we had last year, is it not?
It is, yeah.
It is. So we've kept everything the same, no increases, only for the part-time employees, that they would receive 50 cents. So it's before the board to approve their present rate for the police chief, 2225, let's stay the same, 2125 for Captain Carlson, and the police officers, the increase for the part-time, now don't forget, the ones in probation start at 14.
1450.
1450, okay, excuse me, 1450, and so the budget was shown to support 50 percent increase. Do I hear a motion to support those?
50 cents.
50 cents.
I do like the 50 cent increase.
Trying to cut the meeting short. Keep your eye on me, folks, I'll get it messed up somewhere. So, what is the wish of the board? Do I hear a motion to that effect?
I move that the hourly pay for the police chief and the captain remain the same as last year, and that we increase the part-time police officer hourly rate by 50 cents per hour.
What does that make them per hour for part-time?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
From 1750 to 18.
Thank you.
What is our retention rate on officers right now?
We did pretty good this, so far this year, I mean, you know, it's pretty, pretty good. We have three that are on, still on probation, and they'll be, you know, changing probably this year, but, you know, it's, it all depends who's hiring and where they're, where they're looking for jobs. They have feelers out just about everywhere. We have, I believe, three that don't want to go anywhere. They've been offered jobs elsewhere, but they'll, they want to stay, so they've, they've chosen to stay here, so.
So it's kind of been a mix, a mix of officers staying and wanting to leave?
Yeah.
For higher pay?
Yeah. And benefits.
And benefits, correct.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Do I hear a motion to adopt?
How about a second?
I think I made it.
Oh, okay, call him for a second.
I second.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Okay, you come to the secretary's salary. I guess to say the least, and I'm someone that says what's on my mind, and Helen's well aware of it, that I have not been happy with her performance for quite a while. And since it is a personnel issue, and a lot of problems come out, the effect that a lot of people in the township, and a lot of other things, they are issues that have to be dealt with as supervisors. Okay, therefore, I would like to schedule with the three supervisors an executive session to see one more time. This isn't the first. We've had here two or three other times that we've sat down and had talks with, with some problems with the township. The office has to be precise, it has to be correct, and if there is mistakes, you have to acknowledge those mistakes, that they can be corrected. And so, I insist on that, and so, at the present time, if the board wishes to offer anything as a form of an increase, until we have an executive session for a personnel matter that I consider relatively serious, that got to be changed or be turned around, I put it before the board for them to offer a percentage of increase for Helen.
Could we, at this time here, hold off on any increase until the executive, and at that time, if we make a decision on the increase, we go retroactive to the state?
I, I can live with that, yes. That's up to, that's up to, to the board here, if you're making that in the form of motion?
Yes, yes.
You made that in the form of motion. Do I hear a second to that?
I second the motion.
Okay, motion's made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Okay, treasurer, hourly, you have before you for Livy, you have the wages that were figured out there for her, for 48 hours per pay period, 24 per week, she's currently getting 1166. What is the wish of the board in regards to granting a percentage of increase, which the budget is based upon, on 2, 3, or 4 percent there? What is the wish of the board?
At this time here, I'd like to make a motion that there be no increase given till at least after the probationary period, and then be reconsidered by the board at that time.
Okay, motion's been made, do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered. Custodian, custodian hourly, 10 hours per pay, she currently makes 1042. Okay, you see before you the proposed budgets there, 2, 3, 4 percent. What is the wish of the board in either maintaining what she's getting, or granting a percentage, or an increase to her?
Can I ask a question here?
Yes.
The custodian, when the facilities are rented out, has she paid an additional pay for cleaning up after, or is it the party's responsibility for cleaning up after themselves?
The party's responsibility.
Okay, so there's no extra services provided by this individual?
No.
To clean up after?
No.
Do we know what cost of living for social security was this year?
About one and a half percent.
One and a half percent.
I move we increase the custodian's salary by 2 percent to current year.
Motion's been made, do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, is there any discussion? Motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Okay, we skip down to the highway department, full-time for Tom. Tom currently at the present time is, is 1581. That's his hourly pay for, for the work that Tom does out here.
I make a motion to go with the standing 3 percent for an increase for Tom.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Highway, full-time for Steve. Steve at the present time is making $12.75 an hour. What is the wish of the board?
To be consistent with what we've so far have done, dealt with, I would make a motion to give a 3 percent to Steve.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Motion been made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered. Highway, part-time, 37 hours an hour. That's the maximum that they're allowed to have. Those, those that are working out here with us on part-time, rainy right now, it's been a little bit in the summertime, and our snowplow, fill in our snowplow, they are granted $11.82 at the present time. What is the wish of the board?
In keeping the standing what we've accomplished so far, I'd like to make a motion to, as part-timers, 3 percent.
Okay, motion made, do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Okay, you have the part-time, which, the time that I'm listed underneath there, which is on there, that decision is made by the auditors, because of being the supervisor. Groundskeeper, this is the next one that's in line, hourly. Groundskeeper's getting 1041 for mowing the grass and tending to the grounds out here. What is the wish of the board?
And the ground is strictly to this property here?
Mow the grass and et cetera out here. We, they take care of the grass and stuff out here, Brian. I use the road crew out here to mow the bank down here, the weed whacker and stuff. Nevin, he'd be on using the weed whacker out here. He does a good job being out here, keeping the ball fields and done, but we help without that groundskeeper out here when we get in and we come short on a day or something. We spend those couple hours out here, keeping the rest of it trimmed up for everybody. So that helps out the rec board and helps them out there. Comes out of my numbers, but nevertheless, that's, we donate that time to them. So he strictly has grounds out here for the grass and et cetera. He cleans up the trash cans out here with the kids that don't know how to use them. And he, he does, he takes it to heart out here, so.
Does he also maintain the ball fields?
Yes.
Yes, he does, he does.
Mowing them and all that stuff and prepping them or not?
No.
No, no.
That is the organization who does that.
They do that. As far as prepping that out there, they drag the ball fields and the grass and stuff in the ball fields. I find time to take a stab with Tom up here and put them on a roller and re-roll the whole field, both of them for them. And that's, that's also a contribution to, to the rec board out there through the township. Just so you're, if you're unfamiliar with this, the, the fuel, they purchase all their fuel. The Kubota that they use is the diesel. We donate the fuel into their tractor, which is a considerable amount over a year's time, which they appreciate. That comes out of my numbers out here. But we keep it separated and there's a log for it, I can. And so, we know exactly what it is. If it got overwhelming, well, I'd ask the, the rec board for compensation, but we don't do that. We try, we try to work with them the best we can.
I would make a motion, keeping in line with what we've already accomplished, groundskeeper at three percent.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Okay, I don't know of anything else in regards to that. Takes care of all those. You have?
Any recommendation to the elected auditors?
Yes, Helen. The elected auditors, I made that request there before. The, uh, as so Brian and everybody else knows, you know, spent, it was granted when our roadmaster supervisor decided he didn't want to do this job anymore. Someone had to pick it up, get the contracts done that year. Granted by the board at that time for two hours a day or twelve hours a week, whatever it took, that I received compensation for that. Okay, and that's where that, that's where that comes from. That gives you eight hours, use of my truck, use of my equipment. And that, I don't use the township equipment or truck for travel. I go for parks, do whatever. That all's included in that at no extra charge. Sometimes I don't even break even when I get. I do not get paid for holidays or for days that's not here. If I'm not here, I'm not here, there's no charge for it. Time cards show that and reflect that. So, uh, I always, uh, one time I went to the auditors and fought for three dollars an hour more for that, for an individual, and backfired on me. They rolled it back to seventeen. I would recommend that you ask the auditors for the compensation that they're showing for me that are for laying out the work, doing the contracts and the work that they do for the township, that it be fifty cents more than the highest paid road crew man. Now whether they'll honor that or not, they didn't before. So I would make that for recommendation. If the board have, whatever the wish of the board, if they, but that's my recommendation.
That would be seventeen eleven an hour.
That's part?
That'd be seventeen eleven an hour.
You know, well, then, that's seventeen. I didn't.
Okay.
I was, I forgot. Tom got a raise. So, you know, satisfy the fact.
Okay.
You know? These, that's, I, that's where they, they indicated that they wanted to keep.
So the township occurs, no other additional expenses with mileage? You don't cut any mileage?
Nope, no mileage.
No.
No mileage, no cost for fuel, no nothing, everything that I have to offer, tools, equipment, whatever I have has been offered to the township at free will. And so I put in no other time for any of that. And I plow snow around the clock. I'm responsible for all the actions out there, what the guys do. Things go haywire out there, I take the blame. For, 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 if you understand what, what duties that, that I take upon that. Lay out the work, make sure it's happening, make sure the guys are busy, and try to, try to keep busy every day. Here regardless, whether it's cold weather, rainy weather, or whatnot, you'll find us out there doing something beneficial to the township.
For better bookkeeping, I'm going to make a motion to, uh, to offer an increase to the part-time position for the twelve hours, seventeen fifteen.
That's a recommendation.
Correct.
To, to the auditors.
Yeah, yes.
That, that's up to you guys, and I don't, I don't need that. But that's, you have the right to make that recommendation.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys for that. Not needed. Groundskeepers are taken care of. That's the only item that I think that we have there, and wages and salaries at the present time. Okay. Points of contact, okay? You have the points of contact on there?
That's who they were last year.
What's that?
That's who they were last year.
Okay, there's, there's what you have before you, the point of contact for this year. You have the highway and the police department is what I was pointing contact to, the wish of the board. And so it's before the board, what's the wish of the board to maintain that same contact or change it.
Does CC wish to, um, to retain any of this?
No.
No.
No, no.
Not the best one, I'll mention.
So are you asking for?
Yeah, one, one at a time. Get my point of contacts out of the road.
I move retain Henry as highway and police department contact.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered. You have it for you. What CC served as is Penn Township Planning Commission, uh, and the authority, uh, et cetera. They split that up out there, uh, and you have Brian McGuire there, has the office in here in the park and recreation. The, uh, I would like to make a motion, I will make a motion in regards to this, that the authority appointment be awarded to Brian Peters if he wish it. Brian has had past experience with the planning commission and then the office. And if Brian would like to serve on the park and recreation board, I would make a motion to those two items, both of them, in that manner.
You're confusing what you're saying, but you know, Brian.
Brian and Ryan.
Brian and Ryan, wow, Mr. McGuire or Mr. Peters, okay, how's that?
So you're basically, you're making a motion, I, I fill the positions that CC wants filled.
On, on the authority, the planning commission, okay? I would like to make a motion that, since Brian was familiar with that, she had some experience, that Brian filled the position of the planning commission point of contact, which is nothing. There just isn't much air to do unless you go to the meetings or whatnot. But if there is a point of contact, they bring it, you know. The authorities of, the authority, yes. There, there, there is a point of contact there. I've been that myself and go to the authority meetings and report back to the township. You'll get, you'll get some work there, you'll get some information there to bring back if you wish to do it. Parking rec is always coming after someone for questions and answers out here, which were only the supervisors. I usually let the board, or Brian lets the board, make their own decisions, but yet they need money approvals and whatnot, Brian. They bring that before us to come before the board. So I'd make the motion that, that if you'll be willing to take the authority and the parking rec board, I'll make that motion if Brian was so inclined.
May I ask what evening of the week that the authority meets?
First Wednesday. First Wednesday.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second. I would wait for him to say yeah or no.
Just give me, um, if you can just give me a few seconds, I'm contemplating something here.
Okay.
I will accept.
Okay? Okay. Appreciate that. The, there's, uh, motion's been made. He, he's agreed to it. Do I hear a second?
I can't second that motion.
No, you're not. Well, okay, you're going to include together it is, okay. Let's separate it. Make Brian the authority in the parking rec, okay? Been made in the form of a motion. Do I hear a second to that? Brian?
Peters.
Peters.
I, I guess I'll second it.
You can second that.
He made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, you made the motion, okay. I'll second. Okay. I'm directly moved to second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. I still haven't recovered from plowing snow. Brian McGuire, okay, uh, I'll make a motion that Brian be point of contact for the office and the Penn Township Planning Commission at the present time. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Okay, set mileage. You have that done, the set mileage at the present time is fifty-six. Dropped it a little bit.
Yeah, the federal dropped it to fifty-six even.
Those things that we set, but I don't think there's ever been a penny collected in within the last year.
Steve, I think, that's, collected a little bit.
When he went for?
Something. He took his own car. He went to pick up something. It wasn't much.
Didn't, didn't know that, Helen.
Oh. Yeah, um, I don't have my budget here to.
Steve went to pick up something in his own car and charged mileage. I'd like to know exactly what Steve went to pick up.
Okay.
And who sent it?
I didn't send it.
Okay, we need to, we need to review that.
Okay.
If that is, that's the first.
Yeah, that'd be the first.
That would be the first because. Okay.
I'll get you that information.
We'll follow up tomorrow on that. Okay? Set mileage rate is fifty-six, okay? What is the wish of the board retained in that mileage, if necessary to use?
Oh, if you retain, I move we.
You're retaining it, yeah.
You set the mileage rate at fifty-six cents per mile.
Okay.
I second it.
Same motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it. Okay. Tax levying before you.
Yes. It shows no increase in taxes.
Okay, tax levy is point five five six at the present time.
Point five six four four.
Yeah.
So do we need to move the adoption of the resolution?
Yeah, this is move the adoption of the resolution for the, for the, for the tax.
I move for the adoption of the resolution, setting the tax at, uh, fifty-six cents.
Okay.
Point five six mils.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what the budget's spaced around, okay?
I second it.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Fee schedules. Your fee schedules are for you. There's been, uh, they're there, they're done for you, they take a look at them. There's been a slight change in several of them, just a couple dollars at each one of them. But there, the adoption of the fee schedules is according to Fee Schedule Resolution two thousand fourteen. What is the wish of the board adopting the fee schedules as presented?
I move for the adoption of, of the Fee Schedule Resolution.
Okay.
I second it.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Two thousand fourteen meeting dates.
You have them before you for all the boards. There's only a question of the supervisors on whether you wished them on, to have the November meeting on the nineteenth or in the December meeting on the seventeenth.
Okay. As I suggested, Helen, on there and I have on here. We've done this in the past.
Yes, we have.
Day before Thanksgiving or day after Thanksgiving, the same way at Christmas, and every year it becomes a big conflict. People want to go somewhere or whatnot. I recommend that we have a regular monthly meeting as the same as possible, and except the nineteenth and the seventeenth for December. That is a week early. If there's not conflict, we check with adoption of our budget for approval to advertise for adoption. We had a necessary time tick built in. Check to that, so. What is the wish of the board?
What, did you just make a motion, Henry?
Yes, to put that in form of a motion.
So your, your, your motion includes a supervisor meeting on November nineteenth, December seventeenth?
Yep.
And, and would your motion also include accepting the other, approving the other dates?
Yeah, the rest of the other dates. They're, they're, that's the only, the only change that you have here for the board and supervisors would be that, the nineteenth and the seventeenth right there. The rest of them stay the same.
With those changes, I second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. You have the tax collector audit, which in the past has been done or granted to.
The elected auditors.
Elected auditors to do that. Do I hear a motion to grant our elected auditors take a look at the tax collectors to do the tax collector audit one more time?
I make a motion.
Okay, motion made. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered. Invoice report. You have it before you?
Yes. It shows that there was an ACH transfer to the capital reserve. That is the Argyle money. It is now in the capital reserve under the police department's line item.
Okay. What is the wish of the board on approval of that invoice report that was submitted before?
I make a motion to accept the invoice and expenditure report.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay. Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Pay the bills.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered. Treasurers' report is before you. We'll review them for approval.
You also see that the money is coming out of Pliggett in this and going into the capital reserve for that. Other than that, it's just mainly a couple bills and interest. You'll see the cap tax was eleven thousand six hundred this time. That's a little higher than last year at this time.
Okay. Had much better year this year, believe it or not. Revenues changed a little different from what we thought they would.
Yes. I was only surprised.
Treasurer's report before you. Do I hear a motion for approval, subject audit?
I knew that we approved the treasurer's report subject to audit.
Okay. Motion made.
I second.
We have a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, okay? At this time, every year, reorganization meeting, I always offer before the board, so it's a matter of record, okay? That on the property of Henry, uh, Henry Holman, being my property, there'd be no township equipment parked, turned around on, in any way, shape, or form without my express permission. For those that are familiar with history, there's a reason for that. That was allowed by an individual years ago, and the township later on used it twenty-some years, and he didn't complain and took his ground. Not going to allow it to happen to me. I will not try to impact the snowplows or the people in the area they're at, because it is a much-needed area up there for them. There is no place to get turned around. For the record, I will give that approval later date as needed for, not trying to impact. Like that is a matter of record. Okay? At this time, I missed one very important thing at the beginning of the meeting, and so we have recognition of visitors. I'd like to recognize Brian Peters as our new supervisor. He is no longer a visitor. And I should have done that upfront. My apologies, Brian. Welcome aboard, and, uh, we're not here to, uh, we're here to give you as much help or to help you with anything you want. Don't be afraid to ask for what you want. And, uh, we'll avail ourselves in any way that we possibly can. You need to give Brian my personal self. You need to give Brian my personal cellphone. That's how I'm contacted, like everybody else says. You're welcome to call me at any time.
So it's a 50 bucks to the highest bidder?
You can call me anytime for anything, okay? Old business, Helen.
Visitors?
We have the recognition of visitors, yes.
Lee?
Question. On township solicitor, that's at $150 an hour.
Yeah.
Wasn't that a per-meeting basis before?
No.
That was always per hour? Okay. I thought it was per meeting.
No, that's the engineer.
I would like to offer, Lee, you know, in regards to that, this is one, you don't get this everywhere else. Never charges for a phone call. You can call him anytime, talk to you, he gets back. We are never billed for any of that. Unusual by golly out there in today's world. Other ones, you make a phone call, they got you for 10 minutes at least. So Rich has been very good to us, you know, like that, and that is, that's compared to some other places, that's a good rate. It's the best week you come up with.
And I'm not saying it's not, but...
Yeah.
You know, something that the municipal authority looked at in the past was any time that you had a solenoid, you did not need an engineer or you didn't need a solicitor. Don't bother coming, we won't pay you.
Yeah, and that is one reason why up here that I tried to move the meetings forward because Rich, he don't want to be here any longer than that anyhow. So I'm not sure that we're not going to change that arrangement around. It's just that at the end of the meeting, if you don't have the solicitor's questions come up, then you put yourself in the binding for things later on. But it's been working out pretty good. We've been getting him out of here by 8 o'clock. Old business, PSAPS convention.
More visitors.
Oh, excuse me.
Jody? There she left, okay. Mr. Fickle. Stanley? Okay, that's it.
Behave tonight.
All right, old business.
Old business, PSAPS convention.
Okay, you have the information. I just need to know who wishes to attend and who would be the voting delegate.
Brian and Helen, I would hope you as the new supervisors, any of those things that you want to attend, they're informative, some of them are pain, so you'll wonder why you went. But if you wish to attend, I would encourage you to go to them or don't be afraid to ask them.
I, as being a new supervisor and attending several of their trainings already, I would like to attend. One question though, would this just be something that we would travel back and forth to since they're relatively close?
Yes.
Okay. Okay?
Going voting, voting delegate?
Well, you wish to be a voting delegate?
Not this year.
Okay. Okay.
You want to go?
Let's see, where is it Helen at this year?
Hershey.
Hershey, yeah. Okay.
I think it'd be worthwhile for Libby to go. They have accounting programs and different...
Question, Helen, aren't the programs that you're speaking of and the workshops all on Sunday?
No.
No?
No, there's some that are during the week too.
All right.
Libby, you've been new, do you care to go?
Um, yes, I will.
Okay, would you like to go? I mean, I don't have no problem.
Okay, yes, I will.
Okay, because you're new onboard. There's programs down there that may suit your needs, answer your questions, you know, to a lot of things. And so, we have Libby and Brian wanting to go, who's going to be the voting delegate? Do I hear a motion?
It's not hard, they give you list of resolutions, you just vote.
And the fellow wants to go. I mean, secretary, are all three going to go or not?
Well, not this year, they don't have, they don't have any other than the one on Sunday.
On Sunday?
Oh, yeah, let me see, which one is that? I know it's in here. Oh, not the emergency management. Oh, there it is. Challenges presented to existing and historical buildings. It's a construction code academy. That one is, it's $125.
Would be 95 for a member.
No, you're in the wrong place.
On one page it says 2014 TMA Spring Forum. That is the same event, correct?
I'm sorry, where?
Page five.
Page five.
Is it 2014 TMA?
Oh, no, that is for the emergency management officer. That's something else. I do believe that is on Sunday though.
If you want to decide how long we have to say, Helen?
By the end of the month.
By the end of, by the end of January? Okay. If you guys want to think about it or whatever, let's move the meeting on, that can be taken care of in the January meeting, okay? Make a motion, we table that particular issue until January.
Okay.
Take a look at that program and see what you'd like to attend.
And who would like to attend? I second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent for saying on.
Aye.
Perry County Convention, well, this is the big one.
This is on February 22nd, up at Greenwood Elementary. It's a half a day.
It's a half a day.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to attend.
Okay, like to attend, Brian?
Likewise, I would like to attend.
Okay. Anybody else like to go to that convention now it's time to speak?
Yeah. I'd like to go.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that Brian Peters, Brian McGuire, and Helen be granted to go to Perry County Convention, a registration fee of $15 per person, okay? Do I hear a second to that?
I second it.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent for saying on.
Aye.
I will expect a report back at the meeting as to what's your experience. We used to ask an old-time supervisor, been here many years, he said he didn't learn a thing, but the meal was good.
It always good.
Sounds like Cliff Taylor.
Cliff Taylor, yeah. He always said that. He never hesitated, Stanley, that was his answer all the time. He was always there. Dunkin' and Fire Police?
Dues.
PSAPS dues.
PSAPS dues.
Yes. I have us down for the CDL program, the dues, new law services, and it'll be four township news. Did you want to do the legal defense partnership this year?
What is the wish of the board? Okay, we had it last year, did we not?
Yes.
Have some time on it, if you wish to table till the January meeting for further review, further thoughts on it, we can do that. Do we not have time on that one?
What's the, that's the 29th? He's cutting it close.
Close, okay?
I noticed that you don't have the TMA full membership across that.
Ah, that was a, where's the, oh, that was my second question, whether we wanted to do that or not. Paul Saltis asked to join it. I don't know if Rick would want to be with it or not. They get training and paperwork about it.
I make a motion that we retain the same services that we had from last year for PSAPS.
Okay.
Do I hear a second to that motion?
I second it.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent for saying on.
Aye.
Eyes have it so we're... Now you have the Dunkin' and Fire Police. Okay? In the past years, we donated usually $100. They used to ask for donations. I think last year it was money appropriated, but they never asked, so we never anything given to them.
Correct.
Okay, and I think that was a mistake on our part, and if you put it in there, it should have been considered, okay? Once again, it's carried in, in the budget, it's prepared in the budget, that $100. Okay, is it not, Helen?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it's in the budget, so...
I move we donate $100 to Dunkin' and Fire Police.
Okay. Motion been made, do I hear a second? Okay. Motion been made, not hearing a second.
I second it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Motion been made, Brian, second, all those in favor give their consent for saying on. Eyes have it so we're... Okay, Dunkin' and EMS donation is also put in the budget, there's money appropriated there. I have a question mark on behind it out there for obvious reasons, and I think we need to take a look at a review and let the year go by to see what takes place out here before we obligate ourselves to make another donation. That's my personal opinion. If the board wishes to change out or vote otherwise, now's your time to make your statement.
And what is the donation amount?
In the budget is 15,000 is allocated. The donation amount you gentlemen will have to set.
How was it allocated this past year?
Yes, it was.
I said how was it?
Oh, I'm sorry. $14,856 and not anyone since. It was a percentage above the previous year.
Is that broken up over the year in allotments or is it one set?
One set.
One give. I make the motion to set the allocation of 15,000 to the Dunkin' and EMS as a donation.
Okay, motion been made, do I hear a second? Motion been made, do I hear a second? Motion was made, do I hear a second? Motion has died for lack of a second. Discussion on that particular matter in 2004, when I came into office, EMS was receiving nothing. I think the information should be out here and everybody should know. I fought hard to get that first donation, and I continued that donation, and I made the expression that I thought that it eventually should go up and put a cap on $15,000. We were about there. Over the years, the relationship has been good, things have been good out there. There's nothing to say that this can't be changed or looked at later on, but there's some things need to play out. So at the present time, that money is shown there in the budget. The, Brian made the motion that died for lack of a second, but I'd like to offer that is what is taking place out there. I've been highly supportive of that place out there all along.
Can I make a second emotion, or offer another motion?
Yes.
I'd like to offer another motion that we allot half of that for the six, for the first six months of the year and to be revisited for the second half in the second half of the year.
Okay, motion was made, do I hear a second? Motion is made, do I hear a second? Motion is made, do I hear a second? Hearing none, motion has died for the lack of a second. Dunkin' and EMS donation, we move only on that, the fire company donation is before you.
Do you want to table the EMS?
Pardon?
You want to table it?
Yes, I guess, Helen. I should make a motion that we table that issue for further review table on the air line.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second to that? Okay, motion made with a second.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent for saying on.
Aye.
Eyes have it so we're... Okay, fire company donation.
There's 65,000 allocated in the budget. That's what we gave them last year, with 25,000 of that earmarked for their capital reserve.
They got that, Helen, and in regards to an increase above that donation, they were granted 450 gallons of fuel as of that year at our price, you know, which amounted to $1,458, okay? They came out of the tank, we have the records and et cetera. They've, out of that 450 gallon, they have 37 gallon left over and a carryover, 37 gallon, okay? So they've come up and they've used it, okay? There has been no request, there has been no application, there's been no request to us for additional monies this year, other than where they are at at the present time, none at all. So there was no, nothing submitted, nothing asked, and we went through the budget process and everything in here, left things stand where they're at. I took a look at it, the wish of the board, if the board either can, if they wish to grant anything, 500 gallon, we grant them at the present time at our rate, $1,620 to go with that, with that, with the 65, okay, for them to get fuel wherever they want. That's a benefit to them because we get fuel a lot less per gallon and et cetera than if they had a purchase that I did. Or you can keep it at the 450 plus the donation at the present time for another year. If you wish to increase it by 50, you'll go from 1,458 to 1,620, that would be the increase in monetary value. What is the wish of the board to grant the fire company the donation the same as last year or an increase of 50 gallons on the fuel? I took a hard look at that, went through all the records and everything today, Helen has a complete copy of every fuel draw, and they have a carryover of 37 gallon. So if you grant them the 65 and the 450, they still have 37 yet to pick up, so... What is the wish of the board? I'll put that in the form of a motion, either one, okay? The 450 or the 500 gallon? Wish of the board, I'll put that in front of you, you have the option.
Are you making a motion?
I made the motion.
I didn't understand the either or with the motion.
Okay, either or, 450 or 500 gallon? Either or, you pick your choice. Either or, you pick your choice. If you want to grant them a little bit more than what you did last year, you grant five hundred gallon. If you don't, you keep it the same.
I guess my question is, should your motion specify one or the other if it's a motion?
I'm giving the other two supervisors the option to make it. Let's make that. If you want me to make it, then I'll make it. We grant them the sixty-five thousand plus four hundred. If you wish to change it, change it, I made the motion.
Four hundred or four fifty?
Four fifty.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, discussion. Hearing none. Motion been made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, have it, so order. Okay, the main society.
Okay, um, there are contracts before you.
Yes.
The contract fee is two hundred and fifty dollars. They're asking for an escrow of one thousand, eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we allocated three thousand in the budget for it. Fifteen hundred of that is for the police and dog warden, and the rest would be for the residents.
Okay. Can you see in the budget what we used out of that amount last year?
Yes.
Do you have that paper before you? Brian, maybe you don't have a copy.
Yeah, he has, he should have it. The main society is, uh.
What we use, what we spent out.
Oh, what we spent, um.
Yeah, no, you don't have.
No, I don't have the budget here. It was something like seventeen, eighteen hundred?
Yeah, I think that's what it was. Nevertheless, we never used all.
Well, no, we didn't use all the allocation.
And that's split, Helen?
It's split down the middle between the police and the dog warden.
Yeah.
And the residents coming in and getting a voucher to use that for, for the spade in neutering of felines and dogs. Mostly felines.
I've got it here somewhere.
It should be right after the police portion of the budget. The four, after four nineteen?
We didn't touch that today, only time. Helen, you look. I just glanced through everyone, I would must have glanced through. You looked at the date. The main society.
Four twenty-one, one thirty.
Barry, you got it, okay.
That's because it's not on this page.
Huh?
It's on page four-four, and you only have three.
Okay. That tells me one.
Mm-hmm.
And him all, okay. What is wish of the board?
Now, you may, and that's being split up three ways?
Two, two ways. The dog warden and the police department have one, or half of it, and then the other half goes out to the residents.
And what is the total amount that we're looking at?
Three thousand is what we allocated. Uh, they're asking for an escrow of one thousand, eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents.
That's what you're asking for there on that.
That's under number eight. Once the escrows used up, they would chart, start billing us, that's how it works.
If you want to look at it a little deeper, you can table that till next month. Doesn't have to be, doesn't help.
No, they, they want us to do it right away, but no.
No, 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 if you want time to look at it, or you want time to decision on it, you know?
Yeah.
Or you can do it now.
I move to table to the January supervisors meeting.
I second it.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, so order.
Okay.
Okay, the main society underneath here, new business, you have the holding tank amendment.
Yes, um, Rich looked at that before the meeting. He is okay with it. I just need to know if you wish to have it advertised for the, this January meeting.
Okay. I make a motion, Helen, let me advertise it for adoption at the January meeting.
Okay.
Hey, Rich, do the look at?
Mm-hmm.
Motion made, second, call for a second.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Eyes have it, so order.
Being that it's on the agenda, the Morrison letter of credit, do you want to make a motion to table that until the end of the month?
Helen, I'd like to deal with it, it's time we deal with it.
That's fine.
I, uh, we've had requests and it was dealt with and, and, but tonight I got the chance to talk to Rich with it, and as I felt before over here, we granted that. They met all the compliance in regards to that, for the building at that time, okay? Ten thousand dollars there that he put down there, uh, you have the letters there, everything's there in regards to that, and that should be released to him, okay? With a statement of letter, okay? That he does not have an occupancy permit for the building, he has an awful lot yet to comply with down there, okay? He met the requirements of it, I don't know how we can withhold the ten thousand dollars that was put up there for the building, and Rich doesn't see it either. They met the requirements in getting the plan done, although he has a building sitting there that if he don't comply and finish it, you still have the right to chuck him out. And that's where, that's, sorry, that's where the man's at. I mean, I, you can release that escrow out there with the ten thousand dollars. That was the purpose, to get him started on the building. And he met all those plans. When he got his plan that he submitted for the information, so everybody knows, when he got those plans submitted and got the DEP module approved, at that point, he met the requirements for that. Although he went excess and build a building, he drilled a well, and run his gray water down to the bank, and everything else down there that caused us so much trouble. And talking to Rich, Rich felt that we should release that, that they met that requirement. It's up to the board, wish of the board if they want to release it, if not, you can hold it until later on, let it complete your project.
So up to this point here, he's met all the requirements that was requested of him, with the exception of the occupancy?
Yes.
Yes.
For the building permit, yes.
For the building permit, yes. That part over there, Brian, yes. And what it was, he done it, and then he made no, no, no motion, made no move to put in the sewer and et cetera like he did. And that's, that's when we, that's when we took the upper hand and say, look, you've got to do something, you can't sit here because you need to get, and until then, until that was done, he never submitted the module, or never got the module done and in the DEP. And once he done that, met the requirements, I think he met every requirement that was required of him to that point, although he's still sitting there, non-compliant. But you're trying to work with him, so if you have the feeling that, that you want to hold it, you can hold it, or you can release it. It's not, not going to be harmful to us either way.
So what, so what areas is he not compliant? Is that the sewer hookup and the occupancy?
Yes.
Yes, he has to get all that done. That was all part of that plan, you know, that he was going to agree to do that, and it's still hanging there.
But he is in the process, at this time, making leeway towards the sewer.
Well, I understand at the present time that the authority has taken another line of action against him in regards to this for non-compliance. So I haven't, I know that that's hanging out there, if you've got any doubts, I would suggest you check into that. I know that it's out there, there, there's a lot of ifs and ands on this. It can be released and it can't. Have they asked to be released?
Mr., for the, for this one?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, see, they've asked for it. Yes, Stan.
Is this the same one that C.C. had heartburn with?
Yes.
Why didn't she have the balls to speak up instead of just jumping up every time and saying no?
Stanley?
I mean, I'm glad to hear what's going on tonight because every meeting we hear this, and it was over and gone and.
And, and it, it, sometimes some of these things aren't worth the argument. You know what I'm saying? Just try to find some common ground on the matter, and, and you can or you can't, but to be honest with you, he met what he was required to meet with. He become compliant with that. He is non-compliant with a lot of other things, yeah, Stanley.
I understand.
You understand that? So, that was, I talked to Rich about that right here tonight, did I not?
Yes, you did.
And I had talked to him before, and, and it, it could be released, and of course, you're getting back to where you're at. It got tabled twice, you know what I'm saying? So it's before the board one more time. I'll put it out here where it is, and it's up to the board.
Question, if Mr. Bunce's letter is correct, the letter of credit was provided to ensure that the permit had been issued by the Pennsylvania DEP.
That's correct.
And that permit has been issued?
Yes.
So he's on, non-compliant, that he hasn't connected to the sewer yet, and he hasn't completed the building such that he can get an occupancy permit?
That's correct.
But do those two items relate to the letter of credit?
That's correct.
I'm asking a question, do those two items relate to the letter of credit?
Yes, the way I see it.
The, to, to the letter of credit, the ten thousand letter of credit?
Yeah, the ten thousand.
Yeah.
Yes.
They do.
Yes, they do, unless, unless, correct me if I'm wrong, Helen, but that's the way I understand it.
I thought the.
What's it say? Read, read it again, it, it says.
Said, "Letter of credit specifically references the agreement March thirty-first, twenty-ten, which indicated that a letter of credit would be provided by client to ensure that the permit had been issued by the Department of Environmental Protection."
That's correct.
And in the back of that, there should be the letter that we, the approval letter for that building permit.
The March eight, twenty-thirteen letter?
Yeah, I believe that's it.
Yeah.
Must be, no, not that one. No, that's the connection notice.
That's the connection notice within a hundred and eighty days there.
Yeah, that's the DEP.
Well, he's well beyond the hundred and eighty days.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and that's, that's the problem.
I don't think, that doesn't sound like it relates to the letter of credit requirement.
No.
No, that's.
You're, you're referring to that letter.
Let me go get his.
And Mr. Bunce?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are the two that are in.
Okay, and, and this one here relates to, the, the letter of credit there relates to, to ensure that the permit has been issued, and it has been.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
All right.
And that is what, because without that, that was asked, there was nothing to make him comply, there was nothing to, he, he put ten thousand bucks up, it was going to be held up for other, and then he couldn't, he, he had this approved plan that he didn't move on.
Okay, here's our letter that was sent up with the agreement.
So he went ahead and built, drilled a well, moved in. Signal saying, Stanley, he said, I'm trying to.
This is the agreement?
No, I'm just looking for a date.
August twenty-sixth.
Is that his equipment of the day to let him?
Yeah, I know.
What's that leave?
Is that his equipment on the king cord now?
Yeah.
So he is attempting to hook up.
He, yes, it's, I.
Agreement that that's attached to.
I, I don't know what's the problem, as I, I kept my nose out with the best I can, all I've been down, cleaning rocks up, and knocked the wall down, people complained to me, and doing the best I can to take care of that part of it. But I haven't wanted the municipal authority, haven't wanted the meeting to see exactly where it's at or what it is.
Yeah, that's the approval letter.
I thought the discussion that I heard at the township supervisors meeting was for him to bore that area through the wind trees are.
Well, that was between the municipal authority that they were discussing some of that, I don't know what happened there. You know?
Yeah, I, I just remember a discussion about trying to see.
Brian, can go to the authority meeting, come back and give us a good report in regards to this. I mean, that, that, those reports need to come back here and be put out, you know, if there's something to offer.
And that would be different at a supervises meeting to hear municipal notes come back.
That, well.
I complained about that at the meeting, too, used to, but.
And that, though, if there's something there in regards to that, yes, it can be brought back here. If there's questions asked about it, or you prepare a report and give it.
This is a copy of the credit.
Yeah, I'm looking for, looking for the agreement that's referred to.
The ten thousand is tied to DEP's approval, or yes?
Did you see that part there, Brian?
Yes, right here.
Yes, yes, okay.
But there's nothing else tied to the ten thousand?
Not that I know. Helen, do you know of anything else tied to ten thousand other than?
No, the ten thousand was for the purpose of removing in construction commenced as a result within the agreement inside preparation in the event that item six of exhibit A is not obtained, and item six is DEP approval.
DEP approval.
So that at this point here, there is no reason not to release the ten thousand?
Not mine, or isn't I?
Correct. Uh, I would go ahead and make the motion that we go ahead and release the, um, the ten thousand amount of credit, um, back to, I guess would be Morrison.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if I may, I'd like to add the motion in reference to the agreement of what it requires, that, that, that reference, as you said.
Correct, clarify that was DEP.
And clarify what it's for, if you will, or I'll add that to the second, I will second that.
To include referencing to the requirements that were made by, and met by the Department of Environmental Protection, Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection.
Okay, and that's, that, that would cover the agreement that they made originally. You see anything different, Brian?
No.
No, okay. Motion made with a second? Ask for all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, so we're glad that I found you to flip the bed. Okay? I have one other thing underneath, new business, which may surprise you. We've been out here working around the clock out here, and we have adequate snowplow drivers, but I had two people stopped up and they asked to be volunteers at any time they were needed, they'd be glad to come out, as they'd done it in the past, and that was Cliff and Pickles offered, if you need a snowplow truck, they'd be glad to run the truck. At the present time, we've been scheduled and running our hours out here. The other day, we come in, we saw where we're at, we put in two hours, got the trucks ready, went home, come back out in the evening, took it to midnight. We don't mean to beat anybody out of overtime, but we work the schedule in, and the snowstorm seemed to cooperate with you. And then the guys get a chance to go home and get some sleep, and then we come back out and they fulfill another eight-hour day, and the storm's over, and they're allowed to go with that. So that part of us worked out real well out here. Sometimes you get short, sometimes you have four trucks. The other day, I was glad, we had four trucks, windshield wiper shaft broke off of the one out there, and thank golly, we had one setting in the shed ready to go. We used the new one for the first time this year, pile of snow. And that one that we bought two years ago, never had any skid or salt or anything in it till this year, but it's setting there, ready to go, it's good to know. We will be fixing the windshield wiper tomorrow and inside in the morning. I have nothing else to offer?
Um, just information, Rich agreed to approve the municipal authority water connection ordinance, so I'll be advertising that as per last, uh, meeting's instructions.
I need a motion for Helen to advertise that?
No, that was given in December.
Okay.
Contingent upon Rich's approval.
Oh, okay, contingent, okay.
Yeah.
Get it advertised.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, being nothing else before the board, I make.
I have one more to get to. Um, I'd like to go ahead and withdraw my. Um, I'd like to go ahead and withdraw my request to attend the Perry County Association of Township Officials due to I do have a PSAT training scheduled for that day.
Okay.
So I would enjoy to attend, but, uh...
Gonna miss a good man. Okay, thanks, Brian. Okay. Helen, if I see the lot and the weather lets me know, the last two times I scheduled it's snowed. Didn't make it when I was scheduled that. So, uh, I make a motion, we adjourn.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent for saying aye. Ayes have it, so will we.